We stand to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'll do a roll call. Mayor Hassler.
Here.
Alderman Griminger. Alderman Mooney.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook. Alderman Stupi. Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Muzika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum. Thank you very much. I'd like to look over to you gentlemen.
New crew.
Second. On favor?
Aye.
Very good. Is Kevin here? Will you come forward, please? Come up here. We're going to do a presentation to you, Lord, for his, uh, Kevin is, uh...
Oh, there's the mayoral examiner.
He is.
The old mayor.
The city is, uh, Kevin is retiring from service.
Oh, no.
Uh, from the city. He's worked, uh, this proclamation, Kevin Curtis began his employment with the city of St. Genevieve on February 19th, 1979, as a sewer technician and continued to serve the city as an employee of Alliance Water Resources beginning in 2010. And Kevin started out with a small two-cell lagoon located where the marina is today. And Kevin helped with the construction of a new plant after the flood of 1982. And he received Operator of the Year in 2001 from the Southeast Section for Water and Wastewater. He has continued his education in wastewater field over the years, which allowed him to upgrade his state certifications. He has overseen the addition of the ultraviolet system, equalization tank, biosolids holding tank, and numerous lift stations. Kevin has performed nearly all labs completed for the city since 1985. That's 32 years. And Kevin has contributed to the education of the students of Valley Catholic and St. Genevieve R2 schools over the years by giving tours and explaining the role of the facility and the environment. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and the board of Alderman hereby recognize and honor Kevin Curtis for over 38 years of service to the citizens of the city of St. Genevieve upon the occasions of his retirement. And in the testimony whereof, I have here and to set my hand and course to be affixed the seal of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, this 14th day of December 2017. Thank you. We've just got a small plaque and a gift certificate for you, for your family. That's a lot. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
No speech.
Kevin, would you like to say anything?
Uh, just, uh, started in '79. The city hired me for a 16-week program on, uh, from East Missouri Action. And I've been here ever since.
Well, congratulations and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you so much.
Awesome.
Yeah. We'd also like to make, uh, known, I want to thank, uh, Mike Monia, AKA Wampy, for building our new boxes on the bridge. Congratulations. We caught the people that did the destruction. It was quite a bit of it. So it's good police work and good citizen work, too. So, uh, appreciate that. So, just appreciate him and everybody involved. Thank you all very much. It'll take us to the city administrator's report.
Okay. I was telling somebody, uh, they asked me what's going on. I said, "This is the time of the year when the grass has stopped growing, the potholes are fixed, and the snow hadn't started yet." So you're kind of like in between. And, uh, Gary, uh, Gary's definitely ready for the snow, so is he, uh, he's reporting tonight, he'll tell you all about it. There was a meeting that was scheduled, uh, earlier than, in, 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 this, in this month that was canceled where, uh, the representative of the agency from MODOD, that regulates the railroads in the state of Missouri, is going to visit St. Genevieve and talk about the issues that we've been trying to talk directly to the railroad about and not getting much response. Our hope is that if he gets involved, maybe they will respond and do some of the things that they have suggested they can do, but just never seem to get around to. Uh, and that meeting is rescheduled for, for January the 18th. Uh, in particular, he's going to look at the removal of the crossing over by the Lucent Building, uh, that has been somewhat controversial. Um, I attended the regular meeting of the Southeast Missouri Regional Planting Commission, uh, yesterday.
Yesterday?
Tuesday. And, uh, I've, I've, I've informed you that Chauncey Buckeye, who's led that organization for 30 something, over 30 years, is retiring. Uh, they have hired his replacement. His name is Barry Horst. He, uh, has 30 years with MODOD, recently retired, is intimately familiar with transportation issues, and, uh, you know, is an engineer and, I think, has brings a lot to the table for, uh, for them. Uh, you know, we've all talked about, and I know I've talked about, Dick has talked about the level of service that we received under Chauncey. Uh, I'm not sure that can continue because there, nobody's Chauncey Buckeye. Uh, but, but I think the organization will still be a benefit to us. The mayor and I had a meeting with, um, some of the county commissioners and Brad Arnold from the community center for some issues, and we've talked about, uh, the needs for the water park that they're definitely going to build, uh, the water needs. Uh, they've had some preliminary conversations with Steve and have given him some information based on a water park that was this big. And then over times and engineers' estimates and design, it has kind of shrunk down to a smaller version of what they had originally anticipated. And they've now given Steve the information he needs to, uh, evaluate, you know, what changes need to be made in, in our system in order to accommodate the new water park. The issue we talked about is it doesn't make much sense just to do something for the water park. That we kind of have larger needs for water in that area. Right now, we're pumping water up to the buildings on Progress Parkway. Uh, and there's no, there's no stored water. It's just they, we pump whatever they use and pressures rise and fall based on whether the pumps are pumping. Not the best situation. So our conversation, preliminary conversations with them is, tell us what it is you need. We will look at kind of what the overall need is. And we don't have any money to build what is necessary to serve all of those needs. And you shouldn't have to pay for more than what you need, but maybe we can work something out where if you can capitalize it, we can work out water bills or some, you know, deferred payment, uh, that will get, get the whole thing done rather than just getting a little piece of it done. And so that's going to be looked at and I'll, we'll be reporting back to you as that information develops. Um, the, um, other meetings are just kind of the nor, normal meetings that we use, we usually attend. Um, the, uh, one meeting that I had was with Verizon. Uh, and we have a, a, uh, proposal on the agenda tonight for a grant from the community foundation to pay for electronic devices, tablets or, uh, pads, uh, that will allow us to send your agendas and the supporting documentation electronically. Um, and, and we can, we can save some trees in the process. Uh, the, um, approval of that grant doesn't obligate us to any particular path, but we have to get the grant in this month. So, and I'm, and, and you need to authorize the submission of a grant. If we decide not to proceed, then, you know, we can withdraw the grant. Uh, it, but we have to be specific in what it is we're requesting and, um, and the timeframe in which it will be accomplished. So, um, and after that, you know, we can, we can have further consideration. But, um, I know there's a variety of ideas about how that could be handled, but Verizon has one of those ideas. Uh, they're talking about providing, uh, tablets to us and, um, you, you, through, and then you'll have basically through the cell phone service, you'll, you know, rather than through emails. Uh, we'll evaluate that and the cost as compared to other, other ways of approaching it and then, uh, present that for your final consideration. Any questions? Thanks.
Gary Roth, you're up.
That's it.
You got my report in front of you, correct? Would it, you guys want me to skim over some of the bigger things or? Get everything ready for Christmas. The downtown for the Christmas walk, the decorations all put up. Uh, we had to put the tent up again for the Christmas walk. We built the, I call it a rack for our salt spreaders to hang in that, uh, makes it much safer to put them on and off and quicker. Where if we're now, if we need a truck in the middle of winter, it's just a matter of a few minutes to have one ready with the spreader off and... Uh, we did a lot of patching. Uh, got, we got caught up pretty well on potholes, I think, till the weather starts hitting bad. Got all the snow equipment on, serviced and ready to go. Uh, did some ditch work on Way Hay Street where it held water on the streets so it'd rain, or when it rained, to try to alleviate any ice spots this winter. We got the, uh, tree, what do you call that?
Wildlife habitat.
Wildlife habitat brush hog this week. It's a lot of, a lot of trees.
What obligation was to cut it twice a year until the trees achieve the height that's higher than the weeds will grow. And, uh, so that's what we're doing now, is just cutting down the weeds so that the trees have a chance to flourish in the spring.
We got that completed this afternoon, so. We closed all the bathrooms for winter in the park and Valley Spring Park. Uh, we had to replace a streetlight pole that blew over in the windstorm last week. Any other questions, comments?
I've had a couple of people ask me about, um, salt, and we've, I think we've discussed it before, but could you kind of go over what our situation is with the salt and the rivers?
Right now, we have close, I'm estimating about 500 tons on hand, which is a good winter. Uh, we're talking with the salt salesman, you know, in October is the time when you buy the salt, and it runs about $80 a ton then. And he said if you get into a situation where you do need more salt, you know, and then everybody does, it can jump up to $200 a ton. So we went out and purchased another 100 ton that is on standby. So, just to have it in case.
Everything's on site at the street park?
They got 500 ton on site.
He's holding the 100 tons.
Oh, he's holding it for? Yeah, they're holding. And we don't have to take it by March.
Oh, really?
So, yeah.
So you have to pay for it?
Yeah.
It's ours. He's just, he's just storing it for us.
So we'll get it eventually.
Yep.
Oh, what about this, uh, fence thing?
Well, you approved in his budget the replacement of the fence around the perimeter of the building, but the, the price of it exceeds that which anybody can authorize without board approval, so.
Right. It's going to be chain link, as we told the...
Chain link with slats, isn't it?
Oh, okay.
Probably some slats.
Yeah.
That's never happened with our culvert type situation up with the railroad.
North end, no?
Yeah, on the north end of...
Nothing. It's going to be a topic of conversation on the 18th.
There you go.
Well, but isn't that Burlington that's the problem?
We, partly our problem, what's under the, the street. And, and UP in Burlington. And UP has said, "We will do our part, but we can't do it alone." Of course, we're willing to do our part. Burlington, where the majority of the problem is, just comes to meetings and talks about it and then just, you know, whatever happens.
We need to find some local works for railroad. It's got some influence.
Wonder who that would be?
I don't know.
Keep me out of it.
It's a good way to be a former employee.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Oh, my.
Kenny? Good to see you, Kenny. I've seen you a while.
Yeah, I had to work for a living last, last month.
I know, that's all right.
Good evening, everybody.
You can't live on what we're paying?
Pardon me?
You can't live on what we're paying?
Not on a part-time, part-time, no. A couple of things I'd bring to your attention. Back into September, we had a truck that, our 1993 pumper, that did not pass inspection. We did the work on it and it now passes inspection, so all of our trucks are certified again like they need to be. Uh, got a couple more applications out. I wanted to, once again, thank the Herald. They've offered us some space in that local paper when they have room available, so it's a big help to us. We do have a couple of applications out. I did get one in recently. Best kind that get. He's an 18-year-old right out of high school and wants to live around here, so young and energetic, so that's a real good thing. And tonight, we're hosting a regional, uh, training class out at our firehouse at University of Missouri class. It's on vehicle firefighting, and right now, we have people from all over surrounding counties. We have 50 people that have come into class tonight. Any questions?
When's your next, uh, trip to check on the new truck?
Uh, the next trip won't be until July. The, the next timeline thing would be the completion of the chassis.
That's scheduled, right? Everything else is scheduled?
As far as we know, it is.
Yeah. That's great.
Any other questions? Thank you very much, Kevin.
Thank you.
Ms. Carla?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So you have my staff report in front of you. There's, there wasn't, there wasn't much last month with the holiday. In fact, most of what I have that's pending on here is sent before you this evening, so... Does anyone have any questions for me?
So, how's the survey of property maintenance?
Um, we do have, Officer Pollock is on light duty right now, and so he has been driving around and he's been taking an inventory and photographs of the properties across town. He's made it the majority of, of the south part of town and working his way this direction. But he's been on that for, I guess, almost two weeks now, so it's...
Not full-time, he's doing it?
He's, yeah, he's doing it in between, you know, when he's...
He's just to the police department?
Right. So, but he needed, since his arm is, is hurt, he needed some light duty work and we had some to do.
Where do you stand on the abatement for the property on South Main where we can't get a hold of it?
Um, well, and actually, I talked to Eric about that, and, I mean, she has a warrant.
Okay.
Um, she has a warrant that's going to stand until she comes back. Um, but we can try to find her and maybe go get her.
Right. Because I know, and rightly so, the neighbors have had enough of that.
Yeah.
And we all have.
Right.
Just curious where it, where it sits, you know?
And, and at this point, we've issued a ticket. We issued a letter. We didn't get a response from that. We issued a ticket. There was two failure, two appears. A warrant was issued and she's not been back.
Well, just so, the reason I'm asking you this is so that it's made public, so that they do know that we're, we're working on it.
Yeah.
So, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else?
Thank you very much, Carla. Any committee reports? All right. Takes us to public comments. So I'm certain we have a lot of people out here, so I know we have some, y'all looked at the consent agenda, uh, so now's the time, we're going to do the public comments. So if you have something to address this board with, now's, uh, now's the time. You're more than welcome to take the podium and address the board of Alderman, the mayor. There you go, Mark.
Um, I'm Mark Buckeye, mostly, I think, probably, I mean, if not, uh, I received a letter from the city that they were wanting to do a, um, you know, parking area on the, what, north end of, north side of Jefferson. I have a building on the corner there on the northeast, northwest side of Jefferson and Main. And I know parking there is not optimal. It's always been bad. Um, I'm not, I'm just kind of curious who, whose idea was to do that and what, why they were wanting to do it. Um, I have, like I said, I have tenants that park on Jefferson, they park on Main. Um, access to the upper unit is only accessed through the back of the building, so they always park on the side. And then if I'm doing any work there myself, you know, I mean, I could always carry a 38-foot fiberglass layer across Main Street, I guess, but, um, I don't, I don't know, I'm just curious why they were wanting to do a parking, or no parking on that side of the street.
The concern is there is, the street is quite narrow and, um, there are often cars that, that sit there for extended periods of time that may, or may not always be properly licensed. Um, and I think it, it creates a, uh, safety hazard. Uh, if a fire truck were to have to try to get through there, that can be very challenging. Um, and I think also for the street department on, uh, days of snow removal and things like that. I think that's the concern. And if anybody disagrees with, uh, that assessment, but, uh, that's, that's how I remember it coming up.
Well, and every day for the school buses going through.
Wait, you gotta, you gotta speak, you just have to cut the podium.
I mean, I, yeah, like I said, I realize, I mean, I've seen cars sit there. I had my backyard over there used as a parking lot. I've had people drive through my backyard, that's why the fence went up, but, I mean, and, I mean, if there's vehicles there that are not, you know, properly licensed and they need to be, that needs to be addressed in a different way than taking parking, you know, from, from some of the citizens. I mean, there's pretty much, most of the, most of the homes on that street have driveways. You know, it'd be nice if they would utilize them as a driveway instead of a storage area or whatnot, but...
There are a couple houses that have driveways on that street.
Yeah. But they, you know, they just, you know, it just, it's just, it's just, it's a bad situation, that whole area is, right there. But, you know, I don't, I don't think the, the, the right idea is to take it and make the non-parking area. I mean...
Mark, do you, uh, do you have any off-street parking for that?
No, I don't. Uh, Tracy's next door, Dr. Cavens, they have a drive that comes in from the back.
Okay, so you don't have an easement to the back?
No, there's not. All I have is on-street parking.
Okay.
It's either on Main or Jefferson.
I don't know why, I was thinking he had parking back there, but I guess...
No, there's just, there's just one driveway coming, coming up the back.
The apartments there do.
Okay, well...
Well, the apartments in the building, the center section of, the, next to mine, um, Dr. Cavens, then, now they have an access from the, from the back, an easement and a driveway up in the back.
On Main, right there?
No. If you, well, you can come in from Jefferson or Main. You know, it just kind of, kind of makes it like you...
All shape, huh?
Right, right.
Okay.
But, yeah, I don't have any, you know, off-street, on-street, off-street parking at all, so, maybe that's...
You got two tents?
One unit upstairs, one unit downstairs, yeah.
And that's the property right on the corner of Jefferson and Main?
Correct. Right. It's two-story.
Used to have a, a little...
Yes.
Like a winery shop on the first floor there? I might think of it somewhere else.
That was next, that was next door.
That's the next block over.
Right. Yeah, it's right, I'm right across from Main Street Park.
Okay. So your street address is actually on Main then?
Right, it's 103 Main.
So it's that two-story, right, literally right on the corner?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
How many vehicles they have? They had, they each have two or just...
My tenant upstairs has one and my tenants downstairs have two. And they usually park, one, she parks hers right there in front on Main Street and he parks his over on Jefferson by Main Street, uh, Main Street Park.
Oh, by, by the restroom there?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I noticed that. I was curious about that.
Yeah.
And that's good. I mean...
Well, yeah, it is. I mean, but like, like I said, I mean, it's, you know, people like that. And Jan and Kathy have no parking area along their fence there because of their gate, because of their gate.
Sure.
And my tenant would have to park either out on Main Street or find somewhere else and, you know, bad weather, carrying groceries or whatnot, their early access is coming in from the back. So, you know...
School buses and stuff through there. Yeah, we pretty much always had one go through here. It's, it's been a challenge, that's for sure, as the chief part it out.
Thank you very much, Mark.
Gentlemen, I'm here for the same reason he is. I live on 124 Jefferson Street. And I'm wondering, Heather Brown. I'm wondering if you've considered making that street a one-way instead of taking away parking. I know, I understand your concerns about vehicles sitting there that are improperly licensed or sit there for too long, but surely there's a city ordinance in place for those types of things.
It's a possibility.
I have three homes right next to me that don't currently have homeowners or homeowners that are permanent, and not one of those homes has driveways. And you're talking about family-sized homes. You're talking about families that'll move in and it'll be mom and dad for a little bit that'll be the only drivers, but once they grow up like my girls did, they're bound to have one to three teenage drivers, which adds three vehicles, whether you like it to or not. Telling them when they purchase a home or when they're looking at a home that this is all the parking you have is not feasible, selling a home. Had I been told that when I moved in at my address, I wouldn't have considered it.
I don't know how a one-way street would solve the problem.
Well, you wouldn't have to worry about the traffic crossing. And if it's a problem right there at that very corner, you may have to remove the parking on one side or the other on that corner. But you can stand at the top of Jefferson, looking towards Main Street, and see where the road narrows out.
Right, and I think that's the, that's the problem, is if there's cars on both sides of the streets, on both sides of Jefferson there...
Right.
That getting a, like a bus or a fire truck or...
When you've got the bus, the fire truck, potentially the garbage truck would be another large one that's frequently on the road at least once, twice, three times a week. But there has to be a better option that doesn't lose something for the property owners.
Would there be a way, and I'm just asking, would there be a way to just take it away from the corner to so many feet back where the street's narrower and then allow it?
At least making that corner a little less...
The corners is what you are talking about needing.
Right, they already, if I'm correct, that whole corner all the way along Jan and Kathy's places, there already no parking, so.
Okay.
Just from the, from the stop sign all the way back to their fence, because that's the gate.
But I was talking, I was talking about the other side. I don't know.
The other side is from the...
Right. That's where you need parking, so...
The north side is, I guess, about, I don't know, I didn't measure, probably 25 feet back in the stop sign, and there's already no parking. So I think that would mainly put the, the, they are, the blood, old guy wire come down right there. I think that's what that was put there for. The outside street already has no parking over there.
There's a hydrant there along the street somewhere as well.
Right in the middle of it.
So that's supposed to be, what, 10 feet on either side of the hydrant?
Right.
I wonder how much space is there left even if, if people are actually paying attention to the 10 feet on either side of the hydrant, there's probably not that much space either way anyway.
Well, in one direction, there's a driveway right behind the hydrant, so technically there shouldn't be any parking from the hydrant through that driveway. And I'm sure that there's a vehicle there from time to time, depending on how long they're planning on staying.
You don't have a driveway, right?
I do, yes.
You do?
I'm fortunate enough that I do. And my concern was, like I said, you've got three homes that are currently empty and those three lined up right next to me, none of them do.
Once somebody, once those houses get full, you'll have a couple of cars in your house, and if you have somebody come, come to visit...
Sir, if you, if you come up to the podium if you would, please. Thank you, Mark. Thank you.
Currently, those three houses are empty.
Police taken.
Yeah, your name is? Once you get, somebody moves in there, you'll have, go have at least two cars and at each house. That'd be taking up the whole street. And if you have somebody to come and visit or whatever, they have to walk a block, block and a half away just to come to your house. And that's, that's not the only street that's a problem, you're right there in front of yours.
Do you, do you live on Jefferson?
Currently, those three houses are empty.
Please take that.
Yeah, your name is? Once you get, somebody moves in there, you'll have, go have at least two cars and at each house. That'd be taking up the whole street. And if you have somebody to come and visit or whatever, they have to walk a block, block and a half away just to come to your house. And that's, that's not the only street that's a problem. You're right there in front of yours.
Do you, do you live on Jefferson?
Yeah.
Okay, and what's your name?
Ed Wolf.
Ed Wolf, okay, thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hi, I'm Kim Reinhardt. And, um, hi. We live right in the corner of Second and Jefferson. Actually Gary's old house, Gary Roth's old house. Um, but we kind of had the same problem too. We have a fire hydrant there. Um, so we're only allowed to park one car off of Jefferson. Um, I mean, I don't know what your proposal is, but if, if it is made to be a, a one-way, is there going to be, are we going to be able to park our car at least on one side? We're raising our grandson that's, um, is disabled. There's another little disabled boy that lives up the street from us. They won't pick him up or this other little boy unless, of course, you know, they have an IEP or something of that nature. So, we're going to be running into the problem of, um, if this happens, we're not going to be able to get, I don't know...
The proposal as it stands is just to make the, the north side of Jefferson between Main and Second a no-parking side of the street. It's not for anything else past that.
Okay, so our...
And it's not been proposed for anything to be a one-way street. Um, it's not, that's not been ever discussed.
And then my question is also, who can I contact about, um, getting the curb painted there where the hydrant is? Because sometimes we have people parking right there at our hydrant. That's putting all of our homes in danger. So I don't know if that's...
It's on the record now.
Okay, all right. But that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak on this issue?
Just for the board's information, there is a provision...
Could you please identify?
Chief Eric Bennett, 165 South Fourth Street. Uh, we do have a provision in our code that allows for resident parking permit even in a no-parking area. It's an application process. So for instances that don't have off-street parking, allows them to, to park in, say, a, a two-hour parking, you know, for, for an extended time. So, so they actually are granted a permit. So should this ordinance pass and, and the residents that don't have off-street parking would need to apply for that, then it's, it's on a, on an individual basis and we can evaluate the, the width of the street and the, the traffic flow. And, and if that's something that's feasible, then, then that's certainly something that, that we would entertain. So just throwing that out there for your information.
You normally have resident parking reviews where there are competing demands for parking space for non-residents and residents.
That is one of the applications that we've used. We've also in, in areas that have, you know, like school, in the school zone, two-hour parking, um, for the people that live there and park there through the day. They didn't want to be in violation of the two-hour parking. Um, so I think that was the, kind of the, the intent of the, of the ordinance on that. Thank you.
Anybody else like to address the board on this issue? All right, is there anybody else to address the board for any other issues for public comments? Thank you very much. We'll move along. At this time at 6:33, we're going to start a public hearing. Uh, the mayor and the board of Alderman and the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider a request from Donna C. Marler for a special use permit that will allow guest lodging per municipal code, chapter 405 zoning regulations at 363 St. Mary's Road. The property is currently located in the R2 General Residential District.
I would like to enter into evidence the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, staff reports, the review and recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission. And their record of vote was six in favor, zero against, and two absent to recommend approval for this special use permit with the terms and conditions that I'll read for you now and that are also included in your packet. Um, that at 363 St. Mary's Road, Donna Marler would like to have a special use permit to operate guest lodging establishment. And prior to occupancy, the dwelling may not be occupied until any final permits and the occupancy permit are issued. The occupancy permit shall be renewed annually and shall include a property inspection under the 2012 International Property Maintenance Code. Occupancy inspections prior to each guest arrival are not required. Owners shall maintain a business license with the city of St. Genevieve under municipal code, chapter 605 Business Licensing Division 1 Lodging Establishments. Owners shall provide in a conspicuous location at all times an operable ABC five-pound fire extinguisher. Owners shall ensure that prior to each guest arrival, that exterior lighting at the front and rear doors are operable. No amplified music shall be played outside after 10:00 PM. The owner shall post in a conspicuous location within the dwelling, rules and conditions posted herein for guests to observe. It shall contain emergency telephone numbers of the owners, the police department, and fire department. It shall also include a copy of the current occupancy permit. Owners shall provide phone number and address to the city of St. Genevieve's Building Department for any complaints about the condition of the property or services provided incident to the guest, guest stay. Owners shall provide empty and clean trash receptacles at the property on the first day of each booked guest period for the guest use. Owners shall legally dispose of guest trash and receptacles, recyclables within 24 hours of any guest departure. Legal disposal includes storage of accumulated trash in an approved receptacles or containers in such a manner as to not create a nuisance. Trash receptacles shall not be placed at the street curb except on designated days by the solid waste hauler. The applicant is to provide not less than one off-street parking space to use by guest. Deliveries and/or use of large trucks should be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM. The exterior yard shall be maintained at all times. The planning and zoning administrator shall conduct an annual inspection of the property and submit a written report to the board of Alderman regarding the compliance with the terms of the special use permit. And any signs will require a certificate of appropriateness and a signed permit approved by the administrator. Yes?
This is our Airbnb, um, which basically this, it requires the, uh, the 2%...
That's tax, right?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, which is something that is, that's handled whenever the business license is obtained.
Okay.
All right, this is basically, didn't we do another home right down the...
Yes.
Do you have any questions?
I think it's three for sure.
I think we've got more than that. I think five.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We got, we got any more public... Any more comments? Anybody want to make any more comments before I close the hearing? At 6:38, the hearing is closed. Now entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you, Mr. Paul. I will start another public hearing. For the record, at, at 6:38, the mayor and the board of Alderman, the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri will hold a public hearing to consider requests from Jennifer Kraus for a special use permit that will allow a home-based art studio with retail sales per municipal code, chapter 405 zoning regulations at 145 Washington Street. The property is currently located in the C2 Central Business District.
So I'd like to enter into evidence the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, the staff report, the planning and zoning recommendation for approval with a vote of six in favor, zero against, and two absent. And the terms and conditions for this special use would be a few of the same from the last one. Prior to occupancy, the dwelling may not be occupied until any final permits and the occupancy permit is issued. Owners shall maintain a business license with the city of St. Genevieve under municipal code, chapter 605 Business Licensing. Deliveries and the use of large trucks should be limited to Monday through Saturday between the hours of 8:00 AM and 8:00 PM. The exterior yard shall be maintained at all times. There will not be any noxious or offensive by reason of emission of smoke, dust, fumes, gas, odors, noise, or vibrations beyond the confines of the building. Hazardous materials or chemicals shall not be permitted to remain in or around the property. Any sign requested for the business shall be required to first obtain a certificate of appropriateness for the historic nature of the property and a signed permit from the building department. And those are all the conditions on this.
What did I say the, the vote was again on that?
It was six in favor, zero against, and two absent.
Okay, thanks. Any questions? Sixth party will close that hearing. Now entertain a motion.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion's carried.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Thanks, Jim.
Merry Christmas.
Very well. It takes us to the consent agenda. Y'all had a time to look it over. There's a lot of information in there. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carried.
Question.
Takes us to...
Question.
Question.
On the surplus property, what are we going to dispose of those? Are they going to do that on that bid board thing or that? Is it going to be sealed bids again or are you going to try to sell them on gov.com or whatever you used last?
We haven't decided. We use govdeals and, uh, we take them to auction. I'm just wondering.
Certainly gotten the city's money's worth out of both of them. I think they're running on borrowed time.
I think generally it's... When you guys, advertising them for sale, it doesn't produce the best results.
Takes us to new business. Chef brings up bill number 4202, one we had all the public comments on. An ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri authorizing a no-parking restriction on the north side of Jefferson Street between Second and Main Street. This will be the first reading.
I make a motion to table it for further, I, I, for, maybe for further study to see if maybe we can only do part of the street where really the bottleneck is. Maybe some no-parking there because it does, you know, with the exception, I think, of the corner, it does somewhat widen out as wide as the rest of the streets or certainly as wide as a lot of the other streets in town. So...
I would second that motion by Dick Greniger. I think it needs to be looked at further. Not that, I'm not dismissing your concern, John, that there is a problem there. But I think maybe we need to look at it a little closer because we certainly don't want to cause any hardship to anybody who lives there or anything. But I agree. I agree it needs, that something needs to change.
Is there any private property there that you've addressed that maybe park on also off the street?
Private property is in, where?
Well, I mean, something close in the area.
Their cross street, but they have, they use, I mean, I don't, I mean, you have the apartments right next door. They have their own off-street parking, parked in the back. There, there's issues with, with those parking in the back, Tracy and Dr. Cavens' area. I mean, that, that would be one possibility. Except Dr. Cavens would possibly let somebody by. But then you run into the issue with, she's home, she has guests over. Dr. Cavens and her husband come to town, want to do something for the weekend and they can't park in their own driveway. You know?
Well, we, we, I, I agree. We tabled it and we need to locate into it further. Uh, I appreciate everybody that come out with the public comments. That's, that's outstanding. Uh, it's very helpful. So, thank you all very much.
When it's placed back up, the agenda will send another notice out. So it won't be...
Yeah, it's not going to be snuck through. Everybody will know. It comes back when it comes back up and what we decide. Okay? Very good.
Vote on the table?
Vote on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Takes us, thank you very much. Bill number 4203, an ordinance of the city of St. Genevieve authorizing a contract with more fence for the installation of a fence at the Eighth, Eighth Street, the street shed located at 590 Marcus Street in the amount not to exceed $8,150. So first reading.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill number 4204, an ordinance approving a budget amendment to the city of St. Genevieve fiscal year 2018 budget relating to the water fund, number 030. All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to bill 4205, an ordinance amending...
Where does that money come from?
It's, it's budgeted, but it's for sledge hauling.
It was adopted budgeted 85.
Comes out of...
And we're now changing it to 145.
No, it comes out of the reserves into the line item.
So we're...
Money's there.
Right.
We don't know what it's going to be until we do it. So we keep it unbudgeted until we got the contract and we move it over.
There you go. Okay.
That's water department reserves, not...
Right, not the city's.
Water department reserves.
Right, not... Yeah, not the city's reserves.
Okay, just making sure. There's a big difference between those two numbers.
There is. It's just, again, it's just unbudgeted and handled when you know what it's going to be.
So has it ever been 85,000?
I can't answer that question, Steve.
What was the question again?
You know, what does it normally run, I guess, that...
For the sledge removal?
Right, for the sledge removal.
Typically about 85,000 a year. We used to run about 50, 55,000 and the price increased, run times increased. Uh, the more runtime we have, the more product that we produce for the lime ponds. Uh, so that has been increased over the years. MetroAg intended on hauling at the end of, uh, end of September and was going to continue into the early part of October. And when weather didn't allow, farmers' fields were still, still had crops in them. Uh, so we're, they're getting into the fields late this year.
So, so a lot of this was carried over from last year's budget?
It carries over. It's not budgeted for a current line item because it didn't get spent last year. So it just in that reserve and it's...
Don't worry, I haven't reached it out. I lost track.
It was voted on. It was passed.
Okay, there you go. Good question. Bill number 4205, an ordinance amending the city of St. Genevieve Code of Ordinance, chapter 500 Buildings and Building Regulations, Article 1 in, in general, section 500.010, demolition of buildings. Permit required in section 500.020, demolition of buildings, issuance denied. This is the first reading.
So we talked about whether you thought this should be an administrative act rather than having to come before the board every time somebody wanted to take down a shed or a garage? And this would, this would switch it from being something requiring board of Alderman vote to an action of the zoning administrator.
Motion to approve, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Takes us to other business. And, uh, Mr. Travis Henderson of 268 North Third Street is appealing the decision of the St. Genevieve Heritage Commission to install five additional windows to his home.
So I would like to enter into evidence, uh, section 410 dot 400 of the St. Genevieve Municipal Code regarding appeals. Uh, the notice of appeal that, uh, Mr. Henderson submitted to the city clerk, the staff report, and the record of vote from the Heritage Commission, uh, was to deny the additional windows with a vote of three in favor of denial, zero against, and two absent, which have all been included in your packet. This, um, Mr. Henderson had approached the Heritage Commission at the November meeting requesting to replace eight wood windows with vinyl windows, a project that had previously begun some years before. So there was a mixture of windows in the house. Um, the board approved, since there would be no change in the opening size, they approved for the wood windows to be replaced with vinyl windows with a two-over-two grid pattern so that the appearance would be that they were original from the street. Um, however, the commission did have concerns of cutting new openings into the structure for the five additional windows. So that section of, or that portion of the request was denied by the Heritage Commission. And Mr. Henderson is here. Uh, he can answer any questions to the board that, um... He can answer any questions to the board that, you know, regarding his appeal for wanting to go ahead and move forward with the additional five windows.
I have one question instead, as far as a building inspection and when that happens, what's our...what's the city's position?
Well, he would have a building permit. He's got a building...getting a building permit anyways for the interior remodel work that's being performed or going to be performed, and this would be something that would go inside, go with that if it were approved, and just to make sure that it has the proper jack studs underneath, the proper headers and everything is all the way it needs to be.
So what was the major concern with adding those windows?
Just the historic nature of the property. The house is...wait a second here. Get to that page. The house was constructed in 1890, and it is a contributing building in the historic district. It's not a landmark structure, however, it is a contributing building, and it is, you know...
I have a question. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for...I think I said it again. Thanks again for taking us on. This thing needs help. Do you know that this, if you're looking at the front of the house, this clean two roof and that, was that added? Or was the house built like that?
Yes. Both wings were added later. The two-story section of the house was the original building.
So the original, because it was described as an I-house, so I'm assuming that would've been basically just that piece in the middle. So at some point, that was added on. I got a question on this. On the south side of that house, there's one window up there. What in all that space, is that another bedroom on the...towards the riverside of the building?
I looked at those drawings, and I think it's the hallway upstairs. Is it at the top of the stairs? It goes into like a landing? Is that the way that it shows?
Are you talking about the...an existing window?
Yes. No, no, no.
No, there's no window there. It just looked odd to me that there's one window...
On the south...on the south side of the house.
On the second floor, you're talking about? Yeah, one up towards the front, and then there's nothing in the back. I was wondering about, what's in that space?
Right, this is the back.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that's just a landing area. We hope to put a bathroom in that...in that area, but it's just the land...it's a landing area at the top of the stairs.
But it's gonna be a bathroom then?
Yeah, bathroom and hallway.
We wanna put some light in that hallway.
Yes.
So is any of the windows that you're wanting to add in any bedrooms as far as egress or...
Yeah. May I see this?
Sure.
The windows that we're wanting to add is the one in the hallway is what we just talked about. There will be three in the kitchen, because the current kitchen layout, the window that's in there is basically tucked in a corner and really low to the floor, just kind of odd, doesn't make for installing cabinets and such.
Which elevation is that?
It is on the...
That's the east side of the building we're looking at.
So is this back picture here?
No, actually, the...it's the south side of the building.
Oh, the first one's on the south side?
Yes, first floor, south side, and you'll see it next to the...there's a smaller window that's the bathroom, and next on the right side of that is the kitchen, and so that window is actually real low to the ground and tucked in a corner next to the bathroom. Again, not...just kind of very awkward for laying out the kitchen. So we'd like to raise the elevation of the window and put two in that are equally spaced throughout that wall to allow more light for the kitchen area.
So you're actually relocating one of those windows and adding one?
Yes. And then the other window that I mentioned at going into the kitchen is on the east side facing the backyard. It's just a small window to go over the sink, and it actually would be covered by the all-season porch that you see there in the picture. So it wouldn't even be...it would not be visible.
So this back up is back up in the air?
Yes.
Just a little dot of light?
Right. Yes, sir. And the last window to be...that we wanted to add is on the north side facing the levee. There are two existing windows. One is in a bedroom, one is in an extra type...yeah, in the pictures, you can see the one is boarded up. Right now, we were just keeping...did that to keep water out.
Right.
To the left of that, we would like to add another window to add extra light in that, because that's tucked into a corner next to...
What you'd be proposing is there'd be three, is what you're saying?
Could you attempt to move this middle window?
Yeah, it looks like that center window's been shifted.
Yeah.
I don't know if your drawings are scaled or not yet. Looks like it's shifted.
So it's actually over here more, the current window?
Yeah, I guess it is a little...a little more to the left. So both those windows would be in the back room of that house.
So this center window wouldn't...you wouldn't be replacing or moving that?
We would not be moving it, no.
Notice the one picture of the new window that you've got here and stuff, there's no vertical bars in there, and I read in there that was one of their requirements and stuff, so this is not one of the windows you're gonna be putting in?
It is? They asked that I would just put in a piece to make it a two-over-two?
Put in the grids.
Yeah, put...install the grids. So these are the windows...we're still gonna use the same windows, I just have to install an extra grid.
Right, and any of the additional windows you're gonna put with their requirements of the two-over-two?
Yes, sir. Or at least if they are the same style, that we would go to the...to put the extra piece in.
So they all match, all the same?
Yes, sir.
So currently, do we require egress windows in the bedrooms?
In historic homes? We have flexibility there because of the historic nature. And these windows...these windows, I believe, would be big enough anyways. What size for those windows? They're pretty decent size.
The newer ones that are going in? I actually have...I have those here somewhere.
But they're going in the same...in the same opening size that's there on the other windows. But no, with historic homes, we have some flexibility as far as...
Requiring the egress, right?
I don't know, if you had...Carla, go ahead. According...I mean, from what I'm reading here and what you had stated, this is a contributing building, but it's not considered a landmark...a landmark or landmark quality, correct?
Well, it's not a landmark property, that's correct. It is a contributing structure in the historic district.
Well, according to this, then more flexibility is allowed in our code to do the alterations if it's only a contributing structure.
Well, I think that allowing vinyl windows at all is flexibility in that regard.
Well...
And that...go ahead, Dan.
Well, go ahead. Do we know what...what's the original 1890's building? Do you know?
You mean as far as the windows?
No, what...is the part to the left a addition?
That's an addition, that's what they said. It was just...originally was just the piece in the middle without the two wings on it, and that was gonna be...my point was, it's already altered from what it was.
But my point is...
But I don't have any record. I don't know when...when any of that was done.
Probably a long time ago, I'm sure, yeah.
Because the historic status...the historic status of the property when it was added to the register shows two-story gabled front, central block, and flanking shed roof, single-story wings.
Okay. And that was when? 65?
Yeah, 60, late 60's, early...I don't think it's early 70's, late 60's.
That could've been done in the 20's or 30's.
I was just thinking, as far as altering the original structure versus altering the additions?
That's where I was going with it.
I mean, okay, altering the additions, but leave the original structure intact.
Right. Yeah, I...
You know, compared to what this structure has been through and where it's been, I think many improvements would be very...
Well, I think what he's proposing is tasteful. I mean, it's...I don't think it's... Yeah, actually, that one wall looks a little strange.
With that one window on top and the...
But, you know, I don't know.
I mean, the only problem I had with any of the proposed new windows was the one on the back, the rear-facing one, the half-window, but...
On the second floor?
Yeah, it's on the back.
It's on the back side.
I'm not that concerned about it as with it being in the back. The rest of the windows, like I said, balance out the look of the rest of the building, I mean...
Why is that one in the upper floor so short and swatty?
It would be a bathroom window.
Oh, okay.
And that's gonna be on the back on the main structure?
Right.
You're gonna put a little window.
Right.
So that's gonna take it out of the character of the...
May not be that short and swatty.
But it's not viewable from the street or from any angle.
Well, I think on the south...if that's gonna be on the south side of the building?
The east side.
No, the east side, facing the backyard.
I mean, we've used that criteria before, is it viewable from the street?
I'm still wondering on the south side, how that little one got in there between the two windows?
Yeah, I know, that's...
On the single-story section?
Yeah, this part on the south side, this one.
Yeah, that's a bathroom window also.
Okay.
That was...that was already there when we purchased the property.
Martin, you got something to say, just say it.
I told you today, historic preservation is not gonna be my...
You said that before.
But...
I just don't...
But you asked the question, I don't think it's been added from the question. The Heritage Commission's charge is to preserve the character of the historic district as they make their decisions about moving changes. And to the extent...and one of those is not to change the fenestration of the existing buildings, whether they were practical or looked practical, pleased aesthetically, you know, that was the original openings and, you know, it's... If a mistake was made and a window got put in and somebody's proposing change, their charge is to try and return the building as near as possible to its original condition, not use the presence of an aberrant window as a reason for approving another aberration. So that was, in my opinion, having listened to it, that was the basis of their liberation. You go...whatever considerations you want, except that...that's why you get to hear the amusements.
Right, and if, in my opinion, had the building never been added on to, let's say it was that original piece in the middle, I would say, don't put any more windows on it. Since it's been modified already, I don't know if you can hang on to that. I mean, preserve what? An addition that was done later on?
There's been numerous additions put on this building.
Right, as with many, many structures, but...
There's a provision in there that allows us that if the building has substantially altered to a point that the original character of the building cannot be seen, or more importantly, could not be regained, that we can allow it. I mean, you know, this property's been neglected for so long.
Saying what I heard.
Well, and again, all of this that we're talking about is not on the front, it's on the sides. Right. Now, I think you gotta look...and a lot of times I see them at the heritage, they break the building down. Let's look at what the windows we're wanting to put in the original structure right now, on that original shotgun frame, or... Let's forget about the additions and look at what we wanna do with the...now, that's an issue, because it's...I always heard it before, if somebody wants to come and take it back to its original, you know, you can make it very difficult for that person a hundred years from now to do that, so we gotta be very mindful of that.
In regards to that, if I may, the installation of these windows would not change the layout of the house or the, you know...this isn't like a big addition that's gonna change the whole structure. There are windows that, should anyone want to restore it to the original state, that it would be easy enough to take those windows out, put new studs back in, and even because the time that the house was built, they used the brick for insulation, so there's brick in between all the studs. Even if they wanted to replace that, that would still be possible. I don't think that installing the windows would be too much of a...or uninstalling the windows later on would be too much of a, you know, project.
You can start it back in, play it over. You know?
I make a motion to...
What? Oh. Martin, you got something to say?
No.
Okay.
I... I'm glad somebody's doing something with it.
So am I. So am I. That place has needed attention for a long time. Anyway, you were saying?
I wanna make a motion to...
Do you have something to say?
Yeah, I...I'm certainly no expert on historic preservation and renovation and things like that. I...my home is in the historic district, and it's a contributing home as well, and so I do feel the...a little bit of the burden and responsibility that goes along with that. And I feel like personally deferring to the knowledge and expertise of the Heritage Commission in things like this. I hate to feel like that this board undercuts the great work that those people do, and it's a tough job that they have to do, and I feel like the protection of the historic nature of our town is what separates us from a lot of places and makes us, in my opinion, better than a lot of places. And the historic nature of our town is the reason why we have that great big beautiful wall between us and the river, because there's a lot of places that don't have that, and so I think it's important for us to, as inconvenient as it may be for us, to respect that and to maintain that. And that's just all I wanted to say.
I appreciate that, because that's what I...my...you know, I know when I heard horror stories about living in that district, matter of fact, when I first moved to St. Genevieve, I didn't buy a house on Second Street because, what was it? To me, it was kinda low, I was too close, I knew what the river was gonna do, it could come through though. But knowing that there is stipulations in the district that have to be met, you know, and I get it too, when somebody buys a house, it's their house, but I kinda feel the same way, and I...what I don't wanna do is just what you said, undercut the Heritage Commission, and we've made great strides with that commission to be... They were...they've done a whole...they've done a great job of trying to make things better, you know, for people too, so... And that's where my only difference comes is in that main structure, you know, the additions, and I don't know, and just like Martin says, just because somebody butchered it down the line, is...do we wanna just continue to do that? Is that okay? And it's difficult, and it's difficult for this board, and that's why I never, ever wanna see it come from the Heritage Commission to this board, because it's caused problems in the past, so...but here, where we're here, so I'll support whatever this board decides, you know, so...
I mean, to me, he's...
Pardon me, Carla? I'm sorry, Joe, go ahead, Joe.
He's not trying to add solar panels or make drastic changes to it, he's trying to make the house livable, and that's something that house hasn't been for a very long time.
I duly noted. Duly noted.
Like he said, it can be easily changed back if somebody wants to go through the trouble of changing it back.
John?
I got no dog in this fight whatsoever.
Come up to the...come up to the...you're here.
I got no dog in this fight whatsoever. My parents live in the historic area, you know, since I was a little kid, and if somebody came to those people that owned that house in 1920 and said, hey, we'd like to put a couple more windows in your house and let some light in, they would've said, hell, yes, come and put those windows in for us, we would love that. You know, it's gonna make the house look better, it's gonna make the house better, you know? I mean, I know it's not gonna be exactly the way it was, but it's an improvement, and it's an improvement that they would've made had they had the chance, you know? So...
Thank you, John.
You know, Paul, that's why I asked one of the questions, was any of these windows gonna be added as far as egress in any of the bedrooms, because getting somebody out of a house on fire is very important.
That's why I asked the question about the upstairs, the one...but I didn't realize it, even in that space, I'd be...even in a hallway, I think you got another escape route, I'd be upstairs. I'm all about to say I am.
Absolutely.
You know?
So... And with all due respect to the Heritage Commission and everything that you just stated, I also...I don't see where he's really changing the character of what's there, simply by adding some more...he's not trying to turn it into a mid-century modern or a Frank Lloyd...
He's not trying to turn it into a mid-century modern or a Frank Lloyd Wright or anything else. I don't know.
And as always, it's a case-by-case scenario.
Right.
In this instance...
And again, had those two wings not been put on there, I would want to adhere more closely to the way the house was built, but no matter what you do to it, it's not gonna be what it was in 1890, so...
The front porch is not original, you know, the two sides are not original, on the back, that little addition with the little shed type of roof, I'm sure is not original.
Yeah.
Neither is the screened-in porch original and stuff, so this house has been encompassed with additions.
The safety argument is a strong argument.
It is. It really is.
It certainly is, but think of the can of worms you might be opening up here.
That's the other concern that I would have.
The only thing that I wanna add to it is that in the last year, the Heritage Commission has done a really good job of compromising with homeowners, and trying to make things, you know, that was feasible for both, and that would work in both scenarios. And even in this situation, there was compromise that was made to go ahead and allow for the vinyl windows in the original part of the request, as long as it didn't change the opening size, but, you know... So, I just wanna throw that out there.
So, do we let him put some of them in and not all of them, or...
Well, I, for what it's worth, I own a can of worms on Third Street. That was a... That house was... You know, I put an addition on the back of it. It was allowed, you know, made that happen, 1900. I don't know how that's really different, is it? Is it? I mean, I'm asking.
That house was in tough shape.
Yes, it was. And I needed a main floor bedroom at that time, but that's not this, so...
Now, where do we draw the line between trying to improve property values and...
Well, that's... And see, that's a point that I think gets overlooked sometimes, is how important it is that people wanna take these projects on, and they wanna fix these houses in that part of town.
Right. Well, but we've seen that already in town, there's been a little push to do that, and...
And I think it's wonderful. I wanna see it continued, you know?
If this building...
And I'm just delighted that somebody has taken this on, that's... I agree, yeah.
If this building didn't have so many additions around, that I'd feel differently, but it's completely changed.
Well, that's what I was saying earlier, I know. Well...
Is there a motion for?
I didn't finish the motion, but I make a motion to allow the replacement and the addition of the windows, or so I make a motion to overturn the Heritage Commission. However you want to word it, I don't know.
Approve the appeal, sounds like.
Approve the appeal.
There you go. There you go. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's four A's. Any opposed?
Aye.
Four, 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 two opposed. Motion carries.
You gotta have some discussion with the board?
Yeah. There you go. Here, that one? That one, Mark?
Yes.
There's extra.
Plumbing.
Plumbing.
You know, we're talking about this capital improvement money, and before we get too far into the discussion, we talked a little bit about this, and come the spring, I'm sure, when we have flash floods, we manned up with a couple people. But now, it's kinda out of sight, out of mind, but somebody's gonna get, when we have a flash flood, is gonna have sewage backup in their basement, and I bring this up because one of the main reasons that that money was collected was really for some relief for the people in the flash flood areas, for the most part, and to give them some relief, whether it was gonna be a new levee system or something to keep things from happening in their homes and to protect their homes. Well, with the Corus Plan and what came about with it is obviously not a very good plan, but at the same time, I think that one of the priorities with some of this money ought to be to give these people some relief, after all, I think that's what a lot of it was collected for. So, I've looked at a few things, and, you know, people, again, with the Corus Plan, they're gonna have to live with flash floods, they're gonna have to live with seep water, but I don't think they ought to have to live with sewage backups in their basement, and it's gonna cost us more money than we can ever afford, millions of dollars to fix it the right way. So, I'd like to propose to take some of that money and offer a program to these people, and maybe not even necessarily even in the flash flood area. Mostly, most of the properties would be in the flash flood area, but it's funny that John happens to be here tonight, because I was thinking, there's a resident on Rosier Street that has the same problem, of our sewage system getting full of stormwater and backing up in people's basement. I think, again, we ought to make it offered to anybody that has the problem or the potential problem. So, what this is, if you look at the existing picture, or the existing one, is kind of, and excuse my fittings aren't exactly too cold, but it gives you the idea of, here's how kind of the main... You know, you have a drain in the basement, and this would simulate the plumbing underneath your basement floor, go outside, you got a vent coming up in the yard, and then it would go to... Well, on the backside, if we flip that, it's basically eliminating the drains in the basement, and you'd come in the wall up higher and replumb to your stacks that come through the floor, where you wouldn't end up with any backup in your basements. So, you'd have to dig down to that trap, cut your line there that goes underneath the floor, you would eliminate, again, you'd eliminate your basement floor drains. We've had people in the floods of... Or some of the flash floods of last year, that had their floor drains plugged, and it blew out the plugs. This will eliminate that altogether. It would, or could possibly eliminate, I mean, if you got a washer in the basement, there is, I guess they would have to determine if they really wanted to, they could bring that, from what I understand, a washer will pump at least thirty-nine inches high. If you felt like that wasn't gonna back up that high, you could bring that in, in your wall at that height, and still keep your washer in the basement if you wanted to. Or I guess theoretically, you could pump your washer into a sump pump, and pump the sump into the sewage system, that would be a little bit higher. This is just an option, again, you would eliminate the basement floor drains, there's some pictures, did Mark, you did copy the pictures? These were off, I think, I kinda got these, I think the city of Bloomington, Illinois must've run into this, but this is just showing some of the piping, how it would come through the wall of what would end up, and you'd go up to... So, any of the backups would end up not making it into the house.
Well, there's also, I mean, this is not bad concept, I mean, I... For a time, where I lived in St. Louis County, we were at the bottom of a hill in Grantwood Village, sewer lines were inadequate, MSD, we were on the list for MSD, but it was gonna be way out. So, what they did was, after we had so many basement backups, and it was the same thing, when the creek would rise, it would back up, it would overcharge the systems, they came out and they put backflow preventers, and they did it out in the yard. We didn't change anything in the house. They just dug down in the yard, and they teed into the lateral, and it was basically just a flap valve, and when the water started coming the wrong way, it automatically closed.
Right.
And the way it was built, it was a pipe in a pipe, so periodically, MSD maintained it for a period of time, at which point it became the homeowner's responsibility, but there was just a cap, and you pulled this other tube out, you could rinse it off of the hose, put it back together, and MSD paid for it. So, you know, it was a similar thing, they said, "Well, we're not gonna get to the big project for a long time, so in the meantime, we'll do this." But there are arguments against that, too, because anywhere where you stop flow, then you just increase it somewhere else. But in spot cases, I don't see why something like this or a backflow preventer wouldn't seriously... Because I agree with you, nobody should have to have sewage, you know, a little stormwater is one thing, but nobody wants to have, you know, waste coming up in their house.
So, the bad thing about this, Dick, though, is you're eliminating all floor drains in a basement, whatever seep water comes in.
Well, my other, and I had it kinda typed out, part of the rest of the proposal was it within this, that we would take care of digging, if they don't have a sump pit in their basement already, we would take care of putting a sump pit in the basement.
We had Steve up to forty percent.
And end up putting, where they would, if they got seep water, it would pump it out with it. Either that, Bob, or if they didn't have seep water, you still got possibly your air conditioning, your furnace, you could put a condensate pump for seventy-five bucks on your furnace and pump that water out, but as far as seep water goes, the idea, part of the program, too, was to put, pay for putting a sump pump in the basement for seep water.
Something else you gotta look at, too, is in the system, is, like my house, it's, I mean, I have a problem, but you gotta cast iron stack to put the plastic in, we'd probably have to replace the stacks.
Replace the stack.
Yeah, we'll have to replace the stack, too.
Right.
Steve, you're familiar with the grinder pumps that are put in some homes, aren't you?
Yes.
Right.
Well, that's another option, too, they have those.
Right.
Grinder pumps come with their own set of problems as well.
Well, I know, nothing...
All you're doing is pushing the water to someone else's house.
Does this, is this... You, I don't know, you probably don't see the thing that we're looking at here.
No.
But does this... I'm gonna bring you on.
So, does this kind of do the same thing with that, though? If you're changing this?
We don't know exactly what we're thinking.
Dick, give it a comment.
Yeah, sure. I got a couple extra.
Not everybody...
One, the second option to this, and I had a number in there that I... That not to decide, I threw $4,000 that we would allow. The other, the option two was, if the people wanted to keep the drains in their basement, we would opt to pay up to an amount to put a grinder pump actually in their basement floor, and pump it, and end up pumping it out. So, yeah, what you're saying is, and I guess that's certainly an issue, is when somebody's basement fills up with sewage from the stormwater system, how much pressure is that taking off of the system because of their neighbors? Maybe their neighbors need to do the same thing.
It's only gonna take off pressure until it equalizes.
Well, I understand that, but a basement full of sewage, is that much sewage and stormwater, is that enough? If you did this, and it wasn't coming in your basement anymore, is it gonna force it to somebody else's? I don't know. I guess that's, depends how formidable they are, but is that amount, that little amount of sewage that's going into the one basement going to affect somebody else's?
I can't imagine, I can't imagine that being such a volume of water to even have any effect, just the water that's in people's basements. The limited number of houses whose basements would have water in them has gotta be insignificant to the amount of water that's backing up in the system.
Absolutely.
You know, all I know is, and I don't wanna butt in, he's been in my basement several times.
Couple times.
A couple times during the event, all right? And I have stacks. Well, what happened was, I moved into my house in ninety-nine. We never had any problem with any water coming in our basement, aside from a little bit of water coming in a window well, all right? Ten years down the road, I don't know what causes it, I don't know if it's buildup, if it's infrastructure buildup without proper drainage, I don't know, I've heard all sorts of stories about it, all right? But one time, I'm sitting in my basement, it's raining, and water starts pluming up out of my drains, all right? I don't know what to do, I'm freaking out, I run down to AMK Hardware and buy a pump, I'm pumping water out, it's coming in faster than I can pump it out, because I've got four floor drains in my basement, and four inches of water's coming out every one of them, all right? And I've got six inches of water all over my basement, and it's mostly stormwater, because there's leaves and acorns floating in it, but that ain't all it is.
Right.
All right? So, there's nothing I can do except wait for it to quit rising, and it stopped at about six inches, and then it went down, when the water went down, and we power washed and cleaned everything and disinfected everything, and I thought, "This ain't ever gonna happen to me again." So, I epoxied female fittings in every drain, and I put four-foot stacks on every drain, and every time we get a three- or four-inch rain, I have to babysit my basement, and I gotta run down there and screw stacks in, all four of my drains, including the one outside my door, which is illegal, but it was put out there in nineteen fifty-two. And water runs down my steps and goes in that drain, which is illegal, so I've gotta jackhammer that out and put a... I have to have a sump pump outside my basement door and inside my basement for this to be a realistic fix, all right? So...
If I could interrupt, I'm sorry. I don't think this is on the agenda, and, I mean, other than, you know, comments from the board members, we're getting way far afield of anything that's even on the agenda, so I suggest that you put it on an agenda and have a more thorough discussion, if that's what you intend, but I don't see anyone on the agenda. And so, I would suggest that you put it on your next meeting for a discussion, so that the public will know about, you know, whatever this proposal is. It's one thing to bring up something in board comments and say, "Hey, I'm interested in this, let's talk about this next meeting." I just have to step in at some point as the attorney to say, "Hey, this isn't on the agenda," we got to put it on the agenda and discuss it, so...
I was just trying to throw it out for these guys.
Yeah, I completely understand, that's why I didn't speak up until now, but we're getting so far into it.
Well, I think it's something that definitely needs to be looked at, I think it's a good idea. I had one quick question, what is your opinion of backflow preventers?
Like I just, like I talked about, where they put it in the lateral, and it just prevents the water?
Backflow preventers?
Randy? We'll put it on the agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Do you want us to keep these?
Yes, please. No, I'll go. Keep and keep. Sure.
Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, thank you, gentlemen.